Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Biedelman?
Yeah.
You're not allowed to take vacation anymore.
Lord, as we come to you today, just thanking you for so many things and so many things we take for granted like family, friends, and government, and in America the right that we have freedom of speech and we're able to vote, and we just pray that people will do that on next Tuesday and don't take that gift lightly because so many people gave their lives that we might have it. And we thank you for our Commissioners and their team as they work diligently to make the best decisions for Lorraine County, and we believe you that those things are all going to come together and that we're going to have a prosperous year in 2015. Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks. Commissioner Williams, you have the dog?
Yeah, actually I'm going to have our deputy come out and introduce the dog and also herself so everyone knows who she is and who to get ahold of if they see a stray.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, Deputy at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you guys, talk a little bit closer to it, Derek.
My name is Stephanie, I'm a Lorraine County Deputy at the Dog Kennel, and then we have a tan and black shepherd here, he's about a year old. We found him on Downing Court in Lorraine, he's ready to be adopted tomorrow. So come up and say hi, and we have a total of 29 dogs at the kennel. If you guys have a stray, go ahead and give us a call, we'll come out and get him so that way he can get back to his rightful owner or adopt it out to a new family.
Under resolutions, uh, we don't have investments, so no appropriations?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the airport, approve an insurance coverage with Zito Insurance Agency effective November 4, 2014 through November 4, 2015, in the amount of $4,250.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within Jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Commissioner Kayla, I do have a number of personnel actions this morning, job and family services, Golden Acres Nursing Home, I'm also on receipt of completed labor contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, local ATNS, represent our bridge employees, and I'd like to go over with the Board, and also an update on, possibly an update on where we're at with our 911 employees with regard to their collective bargaining agreement. All those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meetings, shall we go into executive session and talk about those issues that I've explained? Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of October 22nd?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Support the Western Reserve Land Conservancy Clean Ohio Grant application for the Overland Great Southwoods Project, which provides important natural habitat for plant and animal species and contributes to local recreational opportunities with its proximity to the 13-mile-long North Coast Inland Trail and Cities of Overland 77-acre recreation complex, which includes the outdoor sports facility and splash zone, aquatic and fitness center, and Andy McDowell's.
Would you like to join us up here and explain the project with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy?
Sure.
Haven't seen you since the Farm Bureau Dinner.
Yeah, it's been a while, it's been a while. Well, good morning and thank you for putting us on the agenda this morning. The Great Southwoods Project has been a project that the-
Introduce yourself, so everybody knows who you are.
My name is Andy McDowell, I'm Vice President for Western Field Operations for the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Now, the Southwoods is generally the area that's back in behind the Walmart, behind off of west of 58 and south of Hamilton Street. As the description read, this adjoins the Splash Zone Complex as well as the 77 acres that the City of Overland owns, which is an outdoor sports complex facility. The Overland Southwoods Project is just over 60 acres of land that contains a little bit of current agricultural land, but also some very wet forested wetland habitat that's been a priority for the City of Overland and residents around Overland for many years. Actually, we found some biological surveys that were conducted in those woods in the late 1800s, so it's been on the radar of many people for quite some time. This particular piece, or these three parcels, was, the owner of those approached us and said it was originally an investment opportunity way back in the late 90s, but those opportunities never came to fruition and was looking for possible sale. We said, yes, we're definitely interested in this property. It could abate some flooding issues, which that area around Overland, Hamilton Street, certainly has some flooding issues, so the current agricultural fields out in the front will probably be slated for some form of wetland restoration into the future to help suck up some of those floodwaters. The property and the old right-of-way that's through there, which is an old railroad right-of-way but now is in a power line right-of-way, has been used by residents around Overland for a long time, for hikes, casual hikes, school groups, Overland College has been there several times doing different classroom aspects there. We're fortunate that the seller has agreed to a purchase price that allows us to hopefully acquire this entire property with solely using the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund dollars, there won't be any other funds that will hopefully be needed for this. The Clean Ohio Fund was established around the year 2000 by voters in Ohio, was renewed at least once since then, maybe twice, I can't remember, but unanimously by all voters across all counties in the state of Ohio, so with a majority voting in each county to support the Clean Ohio Fund. And the Conservation Fund is one arm of four components of the Clean Ohio Fund, and I would say the Conservation Fund is probably considered to be the bread and butter funding source for conservation organizations across the state, it's been a very successful program. So as a nonprofit applicant, we're required to obtain resolutions of support from the local governments. Last week I attended City of Overland City Council meeting and they, of course, unanimously approved and supported the project, and this morning we're hopefully here to seek your resolution of support as well.
Great project.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Dandy?
Thank you.
Under Children Family First Council, approve an enter and purchase service contract with Mercy Regional Medical Center in the amount of $8,000 for early intervention, sorry, consultation services for Help Me Grow FY15, effective November 1, 2014 through May 1, 2015.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with U.S. Securities Associates, Inc., Independence for Security Services for FY15, in the amount not to exceed $25,000, effective December 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015, and authorize Director to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form and amend for changes in programming content increase value.
So moved.
Second? Discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the request from Macedonia Church of God in Christ, Alariah, for eight refurbished computers that will be used by church members in a computer learning lab in community center.
Mr. Bailey?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Church of Macedonia has applied for eight computers for their computer lab where they do instructions for people wanting to learn how to use computers here in Alariah, and it's a good application for our computer program.
Wonderful, I'll move.
Second? Any further discussion, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the request of We Care, We Share Ministries Lorraine for eight refurbished computers that will be used by students and job seekers in the community center.
Once again, Mr. Bailey?
This agency is really no stranger to us, we awarded them a paint grant earlier this year. I think Ted and Tom were both there for the opening a few Saturdays ago, they got a really going little operation there in Lorraine, and we would like to support it with refurbished computers.
That's a great project over there redoing the old El Centro facility at 1888 31st, I mean, it's just a gigantic home, they're doing stuff with the food pantry, great, I'll move.
Second? Anything further, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the-
No, I just wanted to say thanks Keith.
Under the Engineer, enter an emergency contract with Mid-Ohio Structures LLC, Norwalk, in the amount of $30,000 for repairs of the Hughes Rose Bridge, 0354, over the Black River in Pittsfield Township, in order for the structure to remain in service until the replacement, and will be paid from the bridge engineer account.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Mr. Cliver, I have a question, how soon are they going to start on this project?
He's learning.
Yeah, he didn't start talking from there, he's getting better.
Yeah, he knows.
Actually, he's waiting for your okay today to order the materials and be out there by next week, so.
Wonderful, okay, before the weather hits then.
Yeah, obviously with the, this didn't come in a good time of year because obviously it's very agriculture in that area, so I know the farmers were anxious to see that open again.
All right, thank you. So moved.
Second? Anything further, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Readvertise bids for the Butternut Ridge Road resurfacing from State Route 301 to Grafton Road, notice being the chronic on October 31st, November 7th, and open at 2:00 p.m. on November 19th.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit about this Butternut Ridge, and I met with the Engineers' Office on it, this was ready to go earlier in the year, the cost came in way higher, so we had to reapply for some additional funds from Norwalk, so it has to be rebid out, the project won't start until the spring of next year, correct Bob?
Yes.
Anything further, Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Madam Clerk, Commissioners, we do have one piece of action that I need to bring from the floor today. We are in receipt of a request from the Administrative Judge with regard to payment for counsel. As you know, we're required to have a $50,000 draw on hand with that counsel. We've received bills to date which have exhausted that reserve, so we need to replenish the reserve and also pay, pay the bill. It got a little confusing because we at one time had a $25,000 reserve or draw, and then it was changed to 50, and there was some refunding on the 25 after there was some use and they shifted it all to the 50. Nothing unusual, it's just they were trying to consolidate, and it made it easier for everybody to take, you know, to take care of this. So right now, what we have is, we have a bill for $44,259.50, which will exhaust the current $50,000, and we'll need to replace that, so we need a total of $94,259.50 that needs to be paid from account 1000.0000.100.142.01.6200.6218.1, which is our professional services account. It has the money available in that account to make this payment.
That's a global account?
Well, it's our global professional services account.
In the general fund?
Correct. So I would ask that you pass a resolution authorizing those payments to be made so that we can get that down to the orders, because I don't really want this to become another problematic issue.
I still got to make comments, I know, and we've got to do this button, I still got heartburn over this Jim.
Which one?
I still got heartburn over this because, reading through the, they sent over, I was what was filed with Navakowski's Office, Clerk's Office, there's a court's disagreement with the Board of Commissioners of the location, facilities, and conditions of probation department. I still say, Ohio Revise Co. said the county Commissioners are in charge of housing, and that's what this entry is, back from June 17. I'll do it because we're said we have to, but I still think we should be able to recover that somewhere down the road, and it's not our responsibility to pay their attorneys when it's not the judiciary's responsibility to house anybody.
Well-
But I'll make the move, because you said I have to.
Well, I, I'm not saying you have to, I think we've been advised by counsel before.
Well, no, the counsel, we've been advised by counsel.
I'm trying to get it clear which case this is, because there were two cases.
And the correspondence to me that Tim Lubie sent over to me was the court docket explaining the journal entry of June 17th, that states, word for word, regarding the court's disagreement with the Lorraine County Board of Commissions over the location, comma, facilities, comma, and conditions of probation department, comma, including but not limited to advice, counseling, advocacy, and all litigation, appeals, administrative complaints, and other legal actions the judges deem necessary, including but not limited to constitutional separation of powers, issues regarding court budget, and health, environment, safety, and security concerns.
Well, the reason I ask-
I know I can't share this with you because you've been excluded from this litigation, but I mean, that's what they've referenced in the letter that came over from their, from Judge Betleski, and it was actually Tim Lubie that sent it to me in our, in our office correspondence.
Well, I mean, this, this, the courthouse dispute was never approved in the first place by resolution of the Board of Commissioners. The dispute with Prosecutor's Office over the diversion program was, and you put an entry on, you know, to pay that, so approval funds for that still has to go through this board, but we never did the process for approval of the fees over the courthouse through the Board of Commissioners, that was just a direct order from the courts to the auditor to pay it, and that's how the funds to this point have been paid, by order from the-
They bypassed the Commissioners, is what you're saying.
Didn't go through the Commissioners, didn't approve it in the first place, so.
So we don't have any action on this.
They've just done that by order to the auditor, and I don't know why they're, I mean, if that's what it's for, for those fees as opposed to the diversion program, then they should, you know, we've said from the beginning, just go ahead and make a direct order, and that's, that's what their initial order was, so they need to make a subsequent order directly to the auditor, that's, that's how they've done this.
I'm fine with that.
Commissioners didn't approve that in the first place.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with telling them they need to do a court order, I'm only looking at the letter that was sent to the Board of Commissioners-
From Judge Betleski?
From Judge Betleski, indicating that, you know, the expenditures to date and the exhausting of the $50,000, but I can certainly communicate with them that they-
Was this just an FYI?
I, I don't know it was an FYI because-
I mean, I don't know if you need to do something to shift monies from funds to order so that can be paid, then.
They don't have that ability Jerry?
I'm just not sure where that, yeah.
I was being sarcastic.
Well, this says pursuant to the court's entry docket, June 17, 2014, the sum of $94,259.50 shall immediately be forwarded to DeChandra Law Firm. This was sent to you.
Correct.
In order for me to pay these bills, I need a resolution, right, so.
I would just forward that to the auditor, the order was to the auditor to pay it.
Okay, if that's what counsel wants.
Just out of curiosity, how much have we spent on our attorney to date, do you have a?
About $18,000. Now, there's some work in the queue, as, there's some work in the queue with DeChandra, I'm sure too, because they have other things that have happened. You do know that the Administrative Judge has petitioned the Supreme Court to order us into mediation, and as you're aware, we're the ones that offered mediation to begin with, but they want terms and conditions to mediate that were not acceptable to the Board, we, so now rather than-
Well, we offered nights and weekends to mediate Jim, I mean.
They said they couldn't do it during the day, they're too busy, and we said, yeah, well, we could do it on any evening or on a weekend.
We had two requirements for mediation Commissioners, one was that they stay the court orders and stay any future court orders while we were in mediation, so there wasn't a sword dangling over the Board's head, and so we could have a real meaningful approach to the mediation. Secondly, that all the judges participate in the mediation. The response we received was that they would send the Administrative Judge and the court administrator to negotiate with the full Board.
They want all of us there, but they don't want all to be there.
And we said, well, we'd like everybody to be able, because we feel the collective thinking of all the judges together would possibly produce a better outcome. They said they had too busy of the dockets, wherein we offered to negotiate, to mediate evenings and weekends to be able to have a time period that wasn't subject to their court dockets, and they turned us down on that also. So we reached a bit, a little bit of an impasse on that, so rather than continue to try to figure out something that worked for both parties, they've asked the court, the Supreme Court, to order us to do it their way. So we'll see where that goes, because we have to respond to that this week, because they filed it last week, we'll be filing a response to that this week.
Question, hate to get into strategies out here, but since we're looking at taking a vote on this.
No, we're not, we're not voting to vote on it.
No. The attorney, what is his recommendation, because I know with different legal strategies, if we just have the court, or have the courts go through and do an order on it, does it weaken us in any position? Have you had any dialogue with our attorney?
What, to go out to the payment, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I didn't, actually, I was trying to make this fairly simple and pay the bill and get past it, so we didn't have another big go around.
I just wasn't comfortable with it, sorry, I told you the other day I was uncomfortable with just doing this, because I don't think it's-
The last time Commissioner Kokoski had a concern on a, on a transfer, or excuse me, appropriation of funds within an account, and we pulled that to get more information, and before we even get out of this room, our attorney was getting called by their attorneys that we were doing this and doing that, and we just didn't, we just wanted some information. So I had hoped that we would do this one quickly and just be done with it, so we didn't have attorney, calling attorneys, which means cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. But I guess it wasn't quite that easy.
If I can just clarify, it's the court, and I think their original order that came out said this was to be replenished when it came down, so it was just a matter of them notifying the auditor that it's been replenished, or it's been depleted and you need to replenish it. Commissioners aren't even in the loop involved in that process whatsoever, so it's not a matter of you refusing it, it's just a matter of saying, we're not involved, we don't have anything to do with this. This, this request to replenish the account just needs to be directed to the auditor, and I, I think they, I think that's included in their original order that they made, that it has to be automatically replenished.
I don't see any reason to have any action on this.
Yeah, there's just nothing for the Commissioners to do here.
Okay, I don't know why they-
That's why yesterday was just FYI.
Well, I know David talked with, with Tim yesterday a couple times in this to get it straightened out, and it didn't sound to me like it was an FYI, it sounded like we need to take some action, so.
Oh, that was my question.
I will, I will have this redirected that way, and we can proceed thereafter. I'll let the auditors know which account though, we would like it-
Taken from.
Taken from, and that would be the professional services account that I've, that I've detailed.
Again, that would be your sole responsibility to make sure that there's enough money in whatever account it needs to be drawn from.
Okay.
I think it's funny that the judges are using the same attorney that made his fortune on Mark Stewart with the CRA, and I remember specifically Judge Betleski saying, we're spending all this money because we can't get, or can't get along in the sandbox or something, and now, you know, we're making him rich again, same attorney.
It all depends on who's throwing the sand in the sandbox, so in-
Play nice in the sandbox, that was his words.
The, the, I understand your, your position, remember, we waited till very late to bring legal counsel on board, and we didn't want to, they objected to our use of Prosecutor's Office, so we were forced to hire outside counsel, and of course, I'm trying to control those costs as best, as best possible, but every time there's a filing, we have to respond to that filing, we're required to do so.
So what is the direction we're going to take with the mediation then, are we arranging that, or?
No.
No.
Again, we, we have reached, I consider it a minor impasse with regard to the structure of the mediation, and rather than continue to work, try to work that out.
Can't mediate the mediation?
We can't mediate the mediation, so we will file our position with the court, which basically is going to explain what I explained to you here. We have discussed this, I have no, this is not something we need to be in executive session to talk about, this is an open position with regard to where we're at. The court has saw fit to not only file this with the court, but they also emailed it to both newspapers, so it's like not a very guarded secret. So I, I think that our position's very reasonable, and we're going to file that with, with the court and tell them that we're prepared to mediate, we're not prepared to mediate from the low ground, because they decided how they want the mediation to be held. That is not mediation the way I understand it. Both parties have to come to the table with an understanding of the structure of how this is going to be handled. They want to unilaterally tell us, once again, they always want to tell us, so when, when they couldn't achieve success having a discussion, they just put, put an order in with the Supreme Court asking them, order us to do it their way. So that's where we're at, again, I thought this was going to be a simple appropriation of funds and we'd pay a bill.
Sorry, couldn't do it that way.
Oh, it's, Commissioner, hey, anyway, we got to get it done.
Thanks Jerry, for being on top of that.
So I think I had more than enough to say this morning, I yield to counsel, thank you very much.
I do have two pending matters of litigation to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, last Wednesday after our meetings, I ran over to the mall and took a look at Goodwill's job fair that they had there for the first time, and it was very successful, a lot of businesses, a lot of people sitting around filling out applications, the mall was full, so it was a good day. I'm not sure what the outcome was as far as how many people got hired as to date, I did have a Goodwill Board meeting on Monday, and we talked about other things, not that, because we don't have data on that yet, but our second fundraiser was twice as good as our first fundraiser, so I want to thank you guys for attending, I know Mr. Cordez, you gave us a check, but you didn't make it that day, and to all the sponsors, thank you very much for that.
You know, you should speak to our partnership with the Goodwill here, and what we're doing here in this building with them, for their training.
Yeah, their job training?
Yeah.
I, I'm not really familiar too much with exactly what they're doing.
Well, what they're doing is, they're doing-
Giving soft skills and things like that.
They're doing soft skills training, and their, their population that they're serving is the hard-to-serve, hard-to-reach population, they didn't have a suitable facility to do that, and we had the availability of some space here in the building, and we partnered with them to allow them to have that training here, and they use our older conference room in the back, the old hearing room, and I think the last time they were up here, they, they had quite a few people, probably a dozen to 15 people that they were working on with regard to soft skills training, so it's encouraging, it's a good partnership, they, they approached us and we were able to accommodate them, so, you know, that, that furthers the goals of getting people back into the workplace.
Thank you. Saturday I attended a fundraiser for Victoria Rosado at St. Teresa's Church in Sheffield Village, and of course, Mayor Hunter, the heart of Sheffield Village, was also there. I think Matt Lundey, I think he came and he didn't get to stay, but he made an appearance. Tonight, actually, there's a solace meeting, it's at the Amy Levin Center at 1165 Northridge Road from 6 to 8, talking about enabling boundaries and the family disease of addiction, so if anybody's interested in going to that, it is at 6 o'clock this evening, should be a very good meeting.
And if you can't find it, it's a tough, it's right behind my carpet store.
It is hard.
Right behind my carpet store.
What was in there? What was in there?
Is that a shameless plug for your carpet store tag?
Is that a, a brand-new building? I know it's a Metro Park building, but what was in there before?
It might have been a banking or a credit union one.
It was the old, back in that area, wasn't that the old Januzzi shoe store?
No.
It was in front of it.
Januzzi was the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, so, because I actually had a meeting last week there with United Way, and I didn't know where it was.
Right, I went there once before, and I'm like, where is, I have my GPS, and it's telling me I'm there, I'm like, I don't see it, where is it?
They've done a really nice job back there with, with those facilities back there.
On your way to Gathering House there, it's just a little left there.
Yeah.
Great facility.
I'll be there tonight, anybody wants to attend, 6:00 to 8:00, should be a good meeting. End of my report.
Yeah, busy week. Congratulations to Elaine Jorgas from Alcohol Drug Addiction Services, and Bucky Koff, who were honored at the Laconic Annual Dinner the other night. Sold out as usual, Tom Stubber and his wife and staff do a great job putting that together. Lot of participation from the community, all parts, alcohol, drug abuse, serious diseases. Had a conference call, County Commissioners Association on Monday, the last meeting of Metropolitan Counties, which is the top 10 counties in the state, meeting on our legislative priorities, will be sending those over for our annual meeting to be approved in December, there'll be no November meeting. Board of Revision met Tuesday morning in regards to the Avon Lake Power Plant NRG, and some technicalities, we made no ruling, made no ruling, through jurisdiction, no, to a jurisdiction issue, so that will go back to them, and I'm assuming then they'll appeal to the State Tax Board of Appeals. The Investment Advisory Committee met yesterday, we had a little bit of good news, Mr. Teller says he's going to raise our interest income this year by $100,000, will be up to $1,001,001. I said, that's great, we were $8.3 million in 2007.
Where's the other 7 million?
Yeah, where's the other 7 million we're looking for? Just a whole lot of events all weekend, it's a week before elections, the Board of Elections is open Saturday and Sunday for early voting, so if you get the opportunity, go out and early vote, that means if something happens on Tuesday, you've got your vote in, and as Ms. Beideman stated, it's a lot of people getting there all for us to have that right, so make sure you get out and vote. End of my report.
Yeah, they're open on Monday, too, until 2:00.
Yeah, Monday, too.
Yeah, a lot of events, actually, Laconic, a great event, went in, and baseball coat, so I saw some nice gloves out there. Unfortunately, two of the three that I got were left-handed, so I guess I have to find a, a nice home for those, so.
See the Kudrowskis cake for you, I got, doesn't matter which hand I eat them with.
I don't know where to go from there. But, yeah, great event. Township Association had a meeting, want to thank them for everything they do. The Amherst Fire Department had their annual steak fry dinner, multiple Halloween, I guess, costume events on Saturday night that I went to, and yeah, once, something scary, I went as a politician, so.
That's pretty scary.
Yeah, yeah, I had a little name tag, said Ted Kahlo, so.
There you go.
But, great events throughout the county, and just get out and vote, it's important to exercise that right, and again, if you can't make it on Tuesday, you have up until Monday at 2:00 at the Board of Elections. Thank you.
We'll be sending a retirement proclamation, Denise Derry, 22 years at JFS, retiring October 1st, board correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Nope, he's shaking his head. Are you here from the college?
Yeah, I'm here for a law class.
Oh, okay, wonderful, welcome. Law make a motion go executive session is outlined by the county administrator and the county prosecutor.
Second. Mr. Kahlo.
Aye.
Ms. Kaskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog, he feels it's part-human, it's his second daughter, as Erica said, it's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she's, gives us a lot of attention, she's a good girl.
We had a cat before, we had Abby, and Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat, she will not harm that cat in any way, she's amazing, I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers, and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog, it's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails, and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you, and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog, she's good with people, she likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air, and just look up at you with this sad look, so it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that, so we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now, so.
Like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and, and get her away from me, because I was just so upset, but I, we, we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs, and take them for walks, and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a, a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise, because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to, and he's, he's not that much trouble, because he, he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet, because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the, the potty training deal, I just had to let him out and, and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good, because Salem, he, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me, so, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you, and sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and, and that's okay.
You get Salem?
I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. He, I found him on the internet, actually, he was, he had, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him, we went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were, so we rode our way home, so it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion, I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway, so I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and, and I'm, I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, hey, Mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs, all you have to do is go over there and look, I mean, even now, I still go on the website, and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes, and if, if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license, and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog, and a, and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.
They're doing drugs.
It's easy to start and it's painful to stop.
Prescription drugs are prescription for a reason. If you take too many of a prescription narcotic, you die.
Chelsea was very well liked by her friends and by our teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Aaron enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
How many years did you know you were going to die?
A thousand.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was 17.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin. That was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was the starting hat back. One of our best players. He had several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed. He changed like, was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated and it was really unliking.
I said, "Are you doing drugs?" And my son looked at me with these eyes of, "How could you even think of that, Mom?"
I was, um, walking up to football practice. My coach was walking towards me. He just had this crazy look on his face. He goes, "You think they might have found your brother?" And I was like, to me, I was like goofing. I was like, "I didn't know he went missing." So I was like trying, making him like goofing off. And, uh, he was like, "No, Justin, seriously, they, he might have found his body." And I was like, "Wait a minute." I was like, "Whoa, what?" He's like, "Yeah, they, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford."
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking the simple question, "Are you using drugs?" "No." One has to be able to say, "I'm seeing some signs here that concern me."
He was a little bit more argumentative. We thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils. Literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws.
There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of our account.
That's probably a pretty good clue. There's something going on. Joey was pretty upset with his roommates. They were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, "You're not even going back to that place."
If you feel something's going on, you gotta investigate.
I thought it was just a phase. We partied when we were in high school and it's just sort of a phase you go through as you go, you know, experience life and you grow out of it. And I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found and, and he was unconscious. He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor. More than likely, he questioned, snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of and, um, no notice of. And in the meantime, my husband's in the house. I'm out front in the, in the front of the house just, you know, wondering what we're, we're dealing with here. And so finally Joe just came out and said, "He's gone."
I was downstairs getting ready for work. Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname in some circles of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it and stay out of his way. And she told me, um, it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs, and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, um, someone came in and, and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility.
I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine.
I came home one night, saw the basement light on and went up to the window and, uh, my son was crushing and snorting pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I'd never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere. Is it an evasion? No. You're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're going to tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down, deep inside that said to me, "Something's wrong. You doubt yourself because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something."
You know, maybe deep down, my parents knew that I was high.
You can't always believe your child. Their lies get bigger when they're trying to hide substance abuse.
I knew her inside and out and I remember Chelsea as the little girl that she used to be.
I looked at him and I only saw the most beautiful son in the world.
It was very difficult to think that she would be lying to me, which she was. She was out using and abusing prescription drugs.
Long-acting agents like oxycontin are meant to be delivered in the body over a period of hours, if not a day. If they're chewed, crushed, and snorted, you get the entire dose at one blast and if the body's not ready to accommodate that, you will stop breathing.
We needed to call the police, but what are their neighbors going to think?
Put all of that aside and focus on what's important, as difficult as it may be.
Families can't get too caught up in the idea that, uh, oh, there may be an arrest charge on my son or daughter. They could be in jail. Um, they, they could be in the morgue.
The law saved my life. If my mom hadn't called the cops on me, I don't know where I would be right now.
It was the most difficult thing to do, to call the police on your, on your own child. It was horrible. I have gone from putting importance on things like, "What college are you going to get into?" to just celebrating the fact that she's alive today. Um, she's doing very well. She's clean and sober. She's productive. She's sweet. And I have her back and I'm thankful. And it's wonderful.
Aaron had spent the night at a friend's and they found him blue and non-responsive. They took him to a local hospital.
He was using Vicodin, uh, which we found out through his toxicology, what was in his blood system.
I witnessed him have two heart attacks in ICU. He had staph. He had pneumonia. He went through seizures. The doctor was explaining to us that he was going to die. We held his hands on each side and we started crying and he just laid there.
People use the medications in an abusive way, not knowing what the full consequences are and somebody ends up here.
Within 24 hours, Aaron had opened his eyes.
Parents are the first line of defense in terms of prescription drug abuse.
You gotta sit your kids down. You just gotta tell them about the severity of the problem.
There's a number of steps that you can take.
Educate your child and yourself very early.
Anybody who feels that this can't happen to my child.
It could happen to your kid.
Make sure that you don't have excess pills in your home.
Keep your medication locked up because you're never going to notice if something's gone.
What my mom does is she has these take-home pee tests that I gotta take. No, I want to keep my mom proud of me and I don't want to let her down.
You need to have the conversation with them about drug and substance abuse and you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free.
Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.
Carpooling, a great way to save on fuel, tolls, and parking. Serving 13 counties secure and safe Ohio Ride Share makes it easy to connect with carpool partners safely. You control information shared. Discuss your destinations and needs through our safe site. Carpooling reduces pollution and traffic congestion while it lowers stress and gives riders time to read, work, sleep, socialize. 1-800-825-RIDE or register online at ohio rideshare.com. Point, click, ride. Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Biedelman? You're not allowed to take vacation anymore.
Lord, as we come to you today, just thanking you for so many things and so many things we take for granted like family, friends, and government, and in America, the right that we have freedom of speech and we're able to vote. And we just pray that people will do that on next Tuesday and don't take that gift lightly because so many people gave their lives that we might have it. And we thank you for our Commissioners and their team as they work diligently to make the best decisions for Lorraine County. And we believe you that those things are all going to come together and that we're going to have a prosperous year in 2015. Jesus' name, amen.
Thanks. Commissioner Williams, you have the dog?
Yeah, actually, I'm going to have our deputy come out and introduce the dog and also herself so everyone knows who she is and who to get ahold of if they see a stray.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, Deputy at the Lorraine County Dog Kennel.
We can't hear you.
You gotta put the microphone up.
We can't hear you. Just talk a little bit closer to it, Derek.
My name is Stephanie. I'm a Lorraine County Deputy at the Dog Kennel. And then we have a tan and black shepherd here. He's about a year old. We found him on Downing Court in Lorraine. He's ready to be adopted tomorrow. So come up and say hi. And we have a total of 29 dogs at the kennel. If you guys have a stray, go ahead and give us a call. We'll come out, we'll get him so that way he can get back to his rightful owner or adopt it out to a new family.
Madam Clerk?
Under resolutions, uh, we don't have investments, so no appropriations.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the airport, approve an insurance coverage with Zito Insurance Agency effective November 4, 2014 through November 4, 2015, in the amount of $4,250.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. Um, I do have a number of personnel actions this morning. Job and Family Services, Golden Acres Nursing Home. I'm also on receipt of a completed labor contract with the International Union of Operating Engineers, local ATNS, that represent our bridge employees. And I'd like to go over with the Board. And also an update on, possibly an update on where we're at with our 911 employees, which we go on to. Their collective bargaining agreement, all those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Act for executive session discussion. So I'd ask if the conclusion of our regular Board meetings, we go into executive session and talk about those issues that I've explained. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the minutes of October 22nd?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Support the Western Reserve Land Conservancy Clean Ohio Grant application for the Oberlin Great Southwoods Project, which provides important natural habitat for plant and animal species and contributes to local recreational opportunities with its proximity to the 13-mile-long north coast inland trail and cities of Oberlin's 77-acre recreation complex, which includes the outdoor sports facility and splash zone, aquatic and fitness center, and Andy McDowell's care.
Would you like to join us up here and explain the project with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy? Haven't seen you since the Farm Bureau Dinner.
Yeah, it's been a while. It's been a while. Well, good morning and thank you for putting us on the agenda this morning. Um, the Great Southwoods Project has been a project that the-
Introduce yourself, surveying who you are.
Sorry. My name is Andy McDowell. I'm Vice President for Western Field Operations for the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. Now, the Southwoods is generally the area that's back in behind the Walmart, um, behind off of west of 58 and south of Hamilton Street. As the description read, this joins the Splash Zone Complex as well as the 77 acres that the city of Oberlin owns, which is a outdoor sports complex facility. The Oberlin Southwoods Project is just over 60 acres of land that contains a little bit of current agricultural land, but also some very wet-forested wetland habitat. That's been a priority for the city of Oberlin and residents around Oberlin for many years. Actually, we found some biological surveys that were conducted in those woods in the late 1800s. So it's been on the radar of many people for quite some time. Uh, this particular piece, or these three parcels, was the owner of those approached us and said it was originally an investment opportunity way back in the late 90s, but those opportunities never came to fruition and was looking for possible sale. We said, "Yes, we're definitely interested in this property." Uh, it could abate some flooding issues, which that area around Oberlin, Hamilton Street certainly has some flooding issues. So the current agricultural fields out in the front will probably be slated for some form of wetland restoration into the future to help suck up some of those floodwaters. The property in the, the old right-of-way that's through there, which is an old railroad right-of-way, but now is in a power line right-of-way, has been used by residents around Oberlin for a long time for hikes, casual hikes, school groups. Oberlin College has been there several times doing different classroom, uh, aspects there. We're fortunate that the seller has agreed to a purchase price that allows us to hopefully acquire this entire property with solely using the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund dollars. There won't be any other funds that will hopefully be needed for this. Um, the Clean Ohio Fund was established around the year 2000 by voters in Ohio. Uh, it's renewed at least once since then, maybe twice, I can't remember. Um, but unanimously by all voters across all counties in the state of Ohio. So, um, with a majority voting in each county to support the Clean Ohio Fund. And the Conservation Fund is one arm of four components of the Clean Ohio Fund. And I would say the Conservation Fund is probably considered to be the bread and butter funding source for conservation organizations across the state. It's been a very successful program. So, so as a nonprofit applicant, we're required to obtain resolutions of support from the local governments. Uh, last week I attended City of Oberlin City Council meeting and they, of course, unanimously approved and supported the project. And this morning, we're hopefully here to seek your resolution of support as well.
Great project.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Under Children Family First Council, approve an enter and purchase service contract with Mercy Regional Medical Center in the amount of $8,000 for early intervention. Sorry. Um, consultation services for Help Me Grow FY15, effective November 1, 2014 through May 1, 2015.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorize purchase service agreement with U.S. Securities Associates, Inc., Independence for Security Services for FY15 in the amount not to exceed $25,000, effective December 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015, and authorize director to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form and amend for changes in programming content increased value.
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, approve the request from Macedonia Church of God in Christ, Alaria, for eight refurbished computers that will be used by church members in a computer learning lab in community center.
Mr. Bailey?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Church of Macedonia has applied for, uh, eight computers for their computer lab where they do instructions for people wanting to learn how to use computers here in Alaria. And it's a good, good application for our computer program.
Wonderful. I'll move.
Second? Any further discussion? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the request of We Care, We Share Ministries Lorraine for eight refurbished computers that will be used by students and job seekers in the community center.
Once again, Mr. Bailey.
This, uh, agency is really no stranger to us. We awarded them a paint grant earlier this year. I think Ted and Tom were both there for the opening a few weeks Saturdays ago. Uh, they got a really going little operation there in Lorraine and we would like to support it with refurbished computers.
That's a great project over there. Redoing the old El Centro facility at 1888 East 31st. I mean, it's just a gigantic home. They're doing stuff with the food pantry. Great. I'll move.
Second? Anything further? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the- Do you want to say something? No, I just wanted to say thanks to Keith. Under the engineer, enter an emergency contract with Mid-Ohio Structures LLC, Norwalk, in the amount of $30,000 for repairs of the Hughes Rose Bridge, 0354, over the Black River in Pittsfield Township, in order for the structure to remain in service until the replacement and will be paid from the bridge engineer account.
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
Mr. Cliber, I have a question. How soon are they going to start on this project? Yeah, you can start talking from there. He's getting better.
Yeah, he knows.
Actually, he's waiting for your okay today to order the materials and be out there by next week, so.
Wonderful. Okay, before the weather hits.
Yeah, obviously with the, this didn't come in a good time of year because obviously it's very agriculture in that area. So I know the farmer- it's very agriculture in that area, so I know the farmers were anxious to see that opened again.
All right, thank you. So moved.
Second? Anything further, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Readvertise bids for the Butternut Ridge Road resurfacing from State Route three-oh-one to Grafton Road, notice being the chronic on October thirty-first, November seventh, and open at two P.M. on November nineteenth.
So moved.
Second? Discussion.
Yeah, just a little bit about this, Butternut Ridge, and I met with, uh, the Engineers' office on it, this was ready to go earlier in the year, the cost came in way higher, so we had to reapply for some additional funds from Norwacka, so it has to be rebid out, the project won't start until the spring of next year, correct, Bob?
Yes.
Anything further, Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, now Commissioners, we do have one piece of action that I need to bring from the floor today, um, we are in receipt of a request from the Administrative Judge with regard to payment for counsel, um, as you know, we're required to have a fifty thousand dollar draw on hand, uh, with, with that counsel, we've received bills, uh, to date, uh, which have exhausted, uh, that reserve, so we need to replenish the reserve and also pay, um, pay the bill, uh, it got a little confusing, because we at one time had a twenty-five thousand dollar reserve, or draw, and then it was changed to fifty, and there was some refunding on the twenty-five after there was some use, and they shifted it all to the fifty, nothing unusual, it's just they were trying to consolidate, and it made it easier for everybody to take, you know, to take care of this, uh, so right now, what we have is, we have a bill for forty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, which will exhaust the current fifty thousand, and we'll need to replace that, so we need a total of ninety-four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents, that needs to be paid from account one-zero-zero-zero dot zero-zero-zero-zero dot one-zero-zero dot one-four-two dot zero-one dot six-two-zero-zero dot six-two-one-eight dot one, which is our professional services account, it has the money available in that account, uh, to make this payment.
That's a global account?
Well, it's our global professional services account.
In the general fund?
Correct. So I would ask that you pass a resolution authorizing those payments to be made, uh, so that we can get that down to the orders, because I don't really want this to become another problematic issue.
I still gotta make comments, I know, and that we've gotta do this, but, uh, I still got heartburn over this, Jim.
Which one?
I still got heartburn over this, because, reading through the, they sent over us what was filed with the, uh, Nabokowski's Office, Clerk's Office, is the court's disagreement with the Board of Commissioners of the location, facilities, and conditions of probation department, I still say Ohio revised code said the county commissioners are in charge of housing, and that's what this entry is, back from June seventeen, I'll do it because we're said we have to, but I still think we should be able to recover that somewhere down the road, and it's not our responsibility to pay their attorneys, when it's not the judiciary's responsibility to house anybody.
Well-
But I'll make the move, because you said I have to.
Well, I, I'm not saying you have to, I think we've been advised by, by counsel before.
Well, no, we've been advised by counsel.
I'm trying to get clear which case this is, because there were two cases.
The correspondence to me, that Tim Luby sent over to me, was the court docket explaining the journal entry of June seventeenth, that states, word for word, regarding the court's disagreement with the Lorain County Board of Commissions over the location, comma, facilities, comma, and conditions of probation department, comma, including but not limited to advice, counseling, advocacy, and all litigation, appeals, administrative complaints, and other legal actions the judges deem necessary, including but not limited to constitutional separation of powers, issues regarding court budget, and health, environment, safety, and security concerns.
Well, the reason I ask-
I know I can't share this with you, because you've been excluded from this litigation, but, I mean, that's what they've referenced in the letter that came over from their, from Judge Betleski, and it was actually, Tim Luby had sent over to me in our, in our office correspondence.
Well, I mean, this, this, the courthouse dispute was never approved in the first place by resolution of the Board of Commissioners, the dispute with Prosecutor's Office over the diversion program was, and you put an entry on, you know, to pay that, so approval of funds for that still has to go through this Board, but we never did the process for approval of the fees, um, over the courthouse through the Board of Commissioners, that was just a direct order from the, um, courts to the auditor to pay it, and that's how the funds to this point have been paid, by order from the court.
They bypassed the Commissioners, is what you're saying.
Didn't go through the Commissioners, didn't approve it in the first place, so.
So we don't have any action on this?
They've just done that by order to the auditor, and I don't know why they're, I mean, if that's what it's for, for those fees, as opposed to the diversion program, then they should, you know, we've said from the beginning, just go ahead and make a direct order, and that's, that's what their initial order was, so they need to make a subsequent order directly to the auditor, that's, that's how they've done this.
I'm fine with that.
The weather in regards to-
Commissioners didn't approve that in the first place.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with telling them they need to do a court order, I'm, I'm only looking at the letter that was sent to the Board of Commissioners-
From Judge Betleski.
From Judge Betleski, indicating that, you know, the expenditures to date and the exhausting of the fifty thousand, uh, but I can certainly communicate with them that-
Was this just an FYI?
I, I don't know it was an FYI, because-
I mean, I don't know if you need to do something to shift monies from funds to order, so that can be paid, then.
They don't have that ability, Jerry?
Well, this is- I'm just not sure where that, yeah.
I was being sarcastic.
Well, this says pursuant to the court's entry docket, June seventeen, two thousand fourteen, the sum of ninety-four thousand two hundred and fifty-nine fifty shall immediately be forwarded to DeChandra Law Firm, this was sent to you.
Correct.
In order for me to pay these bills, I need a resolution, all right, so.
I would just forward that to the auditor, the order was to the auditor, to pay it.
Okay, if that's what counsel wants.
Just out of curiosity, how much have we spent on our attorney to date, do you have a?
About eighteen thousand dollars. Now, there's some work in the queue, as, there's some work in the queue with DeChandra, I'm sure, too, because they have other things that have happened, you do know that the Administrative Judge has petitioned the Supreme Court to order us into mediation, and as you're aware, we, we're the ones that offered mediation to begin with, but they want terms and conditions to mediate that were not acceptable to the Board, um, we, so now, rather than-
Well, we offered nights and weekends to mediate, Jim, I mean.
They said they couldn't do it during the day, they're too busy, and we said, yeah, well, we could do it on any evening or on a weekend.
We had two requirements for mediation, Commissioners, one was that they stay the court orders and stay any future court orders while we were in mediation, so there wasn't a sword dangling over the Board's head, and so we could have a real meaningful approach to the mediation, secondly, that all the judges participate in the mediation, the response we received was that they would send the Administrative Judge and the court administrator to negotiate with the full Board.
They want all of us there, but they don't want all to be there.
And we said, well, we'd like everybody to be able, because we feel the collective thinking of all the judges together would possibly produce a better outcome, they said they had too busy of the dockets, wherein we offered to nego, to mediate evenings and weekends, to be able to have a time period that wasn't, um, subject to their court dockets, and they turned us down on that also, so we reached a bit, a little bit of an impasse on that, so rather than continue to try to figure out something that worked for both parties, they've asked the court, the Supreme Court, to order us to do it their way. So we'll see where that goes, because we have to respond to that this week, because they filed it last week, we'll be filing a response to that this week.
Question, um, hate to get into strategies out here, but since we're looking at taking a vote on this.
No, we're not, we're not voting a vote on it.
No. The attorney, um, what is his recommendation, because I know with different legal strategies, if we just have the court, or have the, um, courts go through and do an order on it, does it weaken us in any position, have you had any dialogue with our attorney?
What, to go out to the payment, you mean?
Yeah.
No, I didn't, actually, I was trying to make this fairly simple and pay the bill and get past this, so we didn't have another big go-around.
I just wasn't comfortable with it, sorry.
Last time-
I told you the other day I was uncomfortable with just doing this, because I don't think it's-
The last time Commissioner Kokowski had a concern on a, on a, on a transfer, or, excuse me, appropriation of funds within an account, and we, we pulled that to get more information, and before, before we even get out of this room, our attorney was getting called by their attorneys, uh, that we were doing this and doing that, and we just didn't, we just wanted some information, so I had hoped that we would do this one quickly and just be done with it, so we didn't have attorney, calling attorneys, which means cha-ching, 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 uh, but I guess it wasn't quite that easy.
I can just clear, if I can just clarify, it's the court, and I think their original order that came out said this was to be replenished when it came down, so it was just a matter of them notifying the auditor that it's been replenished, or it's been depleted, and you need to replenish it, Commissioners aren't even in the loop involved in, in that process whatsoever, so it's not a matter of you refusing it, it's just a matter of saying, we're not involved, we don't have anything to do with this, this, this request to replenish the account just needs to be directed to the auditor, and I, I think they, I think that's included in their original order that they made, that it has to be automatically replenished.
I don't see any reason to have any action on it.
Yeah, there's just nothing for the Commissioners to do here.
Okay, I don't know why they-
That's why I asked, was it just FYI?
Well, I know David talked with, with Tim yesterday a couple times in this to get it straightened out, and it didn't sound to me like it was an FYI, it sounded like we need to take some action, so. I will, uh, I will have this redirected that way, and we can proceed thereafter, I'll let the auditors know which account, though, we would like it-
Taken from.
Taken from, and that would be the professional services account that I've, that I've detailed.
Again, that would be your sole responsibility, to make sure that there's enough money in whatever account it needs to be drawn from.
Okay.
I think it's funny that the, the judges are using the same attorney, um, that made his fortune on Mark Stewart with the CRA, and I remember specifically Judge Betleski saying, we're spending all this money because we can't get, uh, can't get along in the sandbox or something, and now, you know, we're making him rich again, same attorney.
It all depends on who's throwing the sand in the sandbox, so, and, uh-
Play nice in the sandbox, that was his word, play nice.
The, um, I, I understand your, your position, remember, we waited till very late to bring legal counsel on board, and we didn't want to, they objected to our use of Prosecutor's Office, so we were forced to hire outside counsel, and of course, I'm trying to control those costs as best, as best possible, you know, but every time there's a filing, we have to respond to that filing, we're required to do so.
So what is the, um, direction we're gonna take with the mediation, then, are we-
Don't know.
Arranging that, or?
No.
No.
Again, we, we have reached, I consider it a minor impasse with regard to the structure of the mediation, and rather than continue to work, try to work that out.
Can't mediate the mediation?
We can't mediate the mediation, um, so we will file our position with the court, which basically is gonna explain what I explained to you here, we have discussed this, I have no, this is not something we need to be in executive session to talk about, this is an open position with regard to where we're at, the court has saw a fit to not only file this with the court, but they also emailed it to both newspapers, so it's like not a very guarded secret, um, so I, uh, I, I think that our position's very reasonable, and we're gonna file that with, with the court, and tell them that we're prepared to mediate, we're not prepared to mediate from the low ground, because they decided how they want the mediation to be held, that is not mediation, the way I understand it, both parties have to come to the table with an understanding of the structure, how this is gonna be handled, they wanna unilaterally tell us, once again, they always wanna tell us, so when, when they couldn't achieve success having a discussion, they just put, put an order in with the Supreme Court, asking them, order us to do it their way. So, uh, that's where we're at, again, I thought this was gonna be a simple appropriation of funds and we'd pay a bill.
Sorry, couldn't do it that way.
Oh, it's, Commissioner, hey, anyway, we gotta get it done.
Thanks, Jerry, for being on top of that.
So, I think I had more than enough to say this morning, I yield to counsel, thank you very much.
I do have two pending matters of litigation to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners' report. Well, last Wednesday, after our meetings, I ran over to the mall and took a look at Goodwill's job fair that they had there for the first time, and it was very successful, a lot of businesses, a lot of people sitting around filling out applications, the mall was full, so it was a good day, I'm not sure what the outcome was as far as how many people got, um, hired as to date, I did have a Goodwill Board meeting on Monday, and we talked about other things, not that, because we don't have, um, data on that yet, but, um, our second fundraiser was twice as good as our first fundraiser, so I want to thank you guys for attending, I know, Mr. Cordez, you gave us a check, but you didn't make it that day, um, and to all the sponsors, thank you very much for that.
You know, you should speak to our partnership with the Goodwill here, and what we're doing here in this building with them, for their training.
Yeah, their, uh, job training?
Yeah.
I, I'm not really familiar too much with exactly what they're doing.
Well, what they're doing is, they're doing so-
Giving soft skills and-
They're doing soft skills training, uh, and their, their population that they're serving is the hard-to-serve, hard-to-reach population, they didn't have a suitable, uh, facility to do that, and we had the availability of some space here in the building, and we partnered with them to allow them to have that training here, and they use our older conference room in the back, the old hearing room, and I think the last time they were up here, they, they had quite a few people, probably a dozen to fifteen people that they were working on, uh, with regard to soft skills training, so it's encouraging, it's a good partnership, they, they approached us, and we were able to accommodate them, uh, so, you know, that, that furthers the, the goals of getting people back into the workplace.
Thank you, um, Saturday, I attended a fundraiser for Victoria Rosado at Saint Teresa's Church in Sheffield Village, and of course, Mayor Hunter, the heart of Sheffield Village, was also there, I think Matt Lundie, I think he came, and he didn't get to stay, but he made an appearance, um, tonight, actually, there's a solace meeting, it's at the Amy Levin Center at eleven-sixty-five North Ridge Road from six to eight, um, talking about enabling boundaries and the family disease of addiction, so if anybody's interested in going to that, it is at six o'clock this evening, should be a very good meeting.
And if you can't find it, it's a tough, it's right behind my carpet store.
It is hard.
Right behind my carpet store.
What was in there?
Is that a shameless plug for your carpet store, Ted?
Is that a, a, a brand-new building, I know it's a Metro Park building-
It's been a while.
But what was in there before?
It might have been a banking or a credit union one, I'm not sure.
It was the old, back in that area, wasn't that the old Januzzi shoe store?
No.
It was in front of it.
This was the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, 'cause I actually had a meeting last week, there was United Way, and I didn't know where it was.
Right, I went there once before, and I'm like, where is, I have my GPS, and it's telling me I'm there, I'm like, I don't see it, where is it?
Mental health, they've done a really nice job back there with, with those facilities Mental health has done a really nice job back there with those facilities back there.
On your way to Gathering House there. It's just a little left there.
Yeah.
Great facility.
I'll be there tonight. Anybody wants to attend, 6:00 to 8:00. Should be a good meeting. End of my report.
Yeah, busy week. Congratulations to Elaine Jorgis from Alcohol Drug Addiction Services, and Bucky Kauf, who were honored at the Laconic Annual Dinner the other night. Sold out as usual. Tom Stubber and his wife and staff do a great job putting that together. Lot of participation from the community, all parts, alcohol and drug abuse, serious diseases. Had a conference call, County Commissioner's Association on Monday, the last meeting of the Metropolitan Counties, which is the top 10 counties in the state, meeting on our legislative priorities. We'll be sending those over for our annual meeting to be approved in December. There'll be no November meeting. Board of Revision met Tuesday morning in regards to the Avon Lake Power Plant NRG, and some technicalities. We made no ruling, made no ruling through jurisdiction, no jurisdiction issue. So that will go back to them, and I'm assuming then they'll appeal to the State Tax Board of Appeals. The Investment Advisory Committee met yesterday. We had a little bit of good news. Mr. Teller says he's going to raise our interest income this year by $100,000. We'll be up to $1,001,000. They said that's great, we were $8.3 million in 2007.
Yeah, where's the other $7 million?
It was the other $7 million we're looking for. Just a whole lot of events all weekend. It's a week before our elections. The Board of Elections is open Saturday and Sunday for early voting. So if you get the opportunity, go out and early vote. That means if something happens on Tuesday, you've got your vote in. And as Ms. Beidelman stated, it's a lot of people getting their all for us to have that right. So make sure you get out and vote. End of my report.
Yeah, they're open on Monday, too, until 2:00.
Yeah, Monday, too.
Yeah, a lot of events. Actually, Laconic, a great event, went in, and baseball coach, so I saw some nice gloves out there. Unfortunately, two of the three that I got were left-handed, so I guess I'll have to find a nice home for those.
See the Kudrowskis cake for your, I got, doesn't matter which hand I eat them with.
I don't know where to go from that. But yeah, great event. Township Association had a meeting, want to thank them for everything they do. The Amherst Fire Department had their annual steak fry dinner. Multiple Halloween, I guess, costume events on Saturday night that I went to. And yeah, I went, something scary, I went as a politician, so-
That's pretty scary.
Yeah, yeah. I had a little name tag, said Ted Kelo.
There you go.
But great events throughout the county. And just get out and vote. It's important to exercise that right. And again, if you can't make it on Tuesday, you have up until Monday at 2:00 at the Board of Elections. Thank you.
We'll be sending a retirement proclamation. Denise Deary, 22 years at JFS, retiring October 1st, board correspondence.
Move the reading to Wade.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Public comment.
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Nope, he's shaking his head. Are you here from the college?
Yeah, I'm here for a law class.
Okay, wonderful, welcome. I'll make a motion to go executive session, as outlined by the county administrator and the county prosecutor.
Second. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams. Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kind of turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door, and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with this sad look, so it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and we're always like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, because like, sometimes, like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was, again, just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow, and he's like, "Don't bother me, I won't bother you." And sometimes, when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorraine County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called, and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were. So we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes, and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorraine County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorraine County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Give the Lorraine County Dog Kennel a call, or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.